Please.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Mike Cancel. Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Okay, in your package you have minutes of the previous meeting, the regular session for April 13th, 2021. Have a chance to read through those. Are there any changes? Subtractions, deletions? If not, will you entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of the previous regular session of April 13th, 2021. It has been properly seconded. We will please signify your approval by aye.
Aye.
Nay, lack sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclaimations and recognition of citizens by the mayor. Do we have someone here to represent the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day? You come forward, please, Will.
Sorry, you can go on the wrong side.
We have this proclamation.
Oh, Tennessee voices.
Tennessee voices. On behalf of the people of Tennessee, proclamation for National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day made on, of course, on May 6th, 2021.
Yes.
But this is a little behind, but for as addressing the complex mental health needs of children due to families today fundamental to the future of the city of Newport, Tennessee. And for as the need of comprehensive or mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families placed upon our community at great growth of our children. And for as it's appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of one's thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being. And for as and it's appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being. And for as Tennessee voices to which you need approach to serving children, youth, young adults, and young adults with mental health or substance-induced disorders is effectively carried for mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and their families in our community. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Roland Dykes III of the city of Newport, Tennessee, am here to proclaim May 6th, 2021 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day and urge our citizens, agencies, and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on that day in the observance of such exercises as will acquaint the people of the city of Newport, Tennessee with the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children, youth, and young adults with mental health needs and their families. In witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and please to seal the city of Newport, Tennessee the city day of May 2021. A lot of reading his mask over. Okay, next on the agenda is our communications for the city administrator, Mr. James Fincham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll apologize in advance for my long agenda tonight. First of all, Alderman Mike Cancel asked that I relay his apologies to everyone. He was unable to get somebody to work for him tonight, and so he had to stay at work in Dandridge. And he also asked that I remind everybody that it's National Police Memorial Week. And so I told him I would be sure to remind everybody of that. The first thing I need is to ask, we have two things, issues, that have arisen yesterday and today that need to be added to the agenda tonight. So I ask that you suspend the rule and add these two items to the agenda. The first is for a police officer who had surgery and has been out on extended leave and has exhausted his personal leave. And he needs to tap into his service credit time for additional sick leave. And you all have to approve that upon the recommendation of the chief of police. And the chief has submitted a letter of request, which he will get up and share with you if you see fit to add that to the agenda. But if we don't do that tonight, he will run out of time prior to the next council meeting. So time is of the essence on this issue. It was the, there was a breakdown. We, when I get into my COVID report, we've had a pretty big outbreak of COVID at the police department, and the person that was responsible for getting that on the agenda is out with COVID. And so that caused the breakdown in communications that didn't allow it to get on the agenda in a timely fashion. So we understand how that could happen. So we, first of all, we would ask that you all do that.
We need a motion to approve to add that. Motion about.
Motion to amend the rules, add that to the agenda.
Yes, Alderman. Bobby second. Okay, we have a motion on the board to amend, to suspend the rules and add this to the agenda. It hasn't been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by aye.
Aye.
And nay, lack sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all. This, the second issue is, again, is something that just came up yesterday. It's not a happy thing to have to put on the agenda, but again, time is of the essence. We, as a result of an internal investigation, we have uncovered some wrongdoing by a firefighter. As the council is the appointing authority for firefighters per the city's Fire Civil Service Charter, the city must, or I'm sorry, the city council must also do the termination if one is so warranted. And that has to be done within 10 days of when we decide that's the direction we want to go and we serve a suspension letter upon the employee. We have 10 days for you all to act upon that, and we served that this morning. So we need, again, to suspend the rule and add to the agenda the termination of a firefighter. And I hate that that's something we've got to do, but it's just where we're at.
You know, most things you have in the city council sort of rewarding or something good, but this one, I hate to be the one, but we've not got a choice on this. And we have to, internal investigation, the torn head that's passed be suspended. And we're going to have to vote on it tonight.
We got to get it on the agenda first.
To suspend the rule, to add the item to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we need a motion to approve.
We need a second.
We got it, we have them.
We got a motion from Profit.
Okay.
Yes, sir, second.
All right, we have a motion, you have a second. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your approval to add, to suspend the rules and add the item to the agenda by aye. And nay, lack sign, wise. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you. On our COVID report for the past month, as I mentioned earlier, we've had a pretty bad outbreak at the police department. We currently have three employees out with COVID. We have one that returned to work yesterday who had been out with COVID for two weeks, but was pretty sick with it. And we had one employee out at City Hall for the past two weeks with it. And that's where a year and two months into the pandemic. And this, this is the worst outbreak we've had. So we made it this long before we really got hit all at one time. Everything else has been kind of scattered out till now. We, you know, we strongly encouraged our folks to get the vaccination. We're still running under 50% on people that have decided to do so. And so thankfully, I've had my shots, and I think that that's what saved me, or I think I would have had it too because I was in close proximity with two people that ended up with it. And I'm just thankful that I'd had the shots because I'm confident I would have gotten it as much as I was working closely with them for the last couple of days they worked. So I'm a believer in the vaccination. As I'm sure everybody has probably seen or heard today, we are in the middle of a run on gasoline. Weigels is completely out. And the Weigels in Dandridge is also out. The, about every place that's got gas, they're lined up six deep at every pump, trying to get fuel. You know, this hack on the pipeline, what came across on the news, I've tried to stay on top and informed on it, but they were saying if they got the pipeline back up and running by Friday, there wouldn't be a gas shortage. But I don't know if it's caused by people panicked buying after they found out about it, but now some of the places are running out. So I put a directive out this afternoon that asks all department heads to try to conserve as much fuel as possible. You know, we, we run on fuel. You know, everything we do is dependent on fuel. Police Department, Fire Department, Street Department, sanitation, everything, you know, we're dependent on fuel. So there's only so much we can do to limit the use, but I've asked all department heads to do everything they can not to use any more fuel than they have to. One of the things that, people kind of getting a bad habit of sometimes leaving their vehicle running when they jump out of it or something to do something else and let it sit for five or 10 minutes and just idle. And so we've asked that, you know, that be stopped. No unnecessary idling. So we're going to do what we can. Hopefully, this thing will be over pretty quick, and it'll be short-lived, but today, everybody's in a panic. Like everybody else, we have hit the wall on employees. Again, if you're keeping track on the news and in the, whether it be online, in the paper, or on TV, everybody, or if you drive up to Cosby Road, everybody is clamoring for workers, employees. There's help wanted signs everywhere you go. And it seems like it's almost like an auction. Well, you go up to Cosby Road today, and we're paying $10 an hour, and then you go up tomorrow, and we're paying $11 an hour, and then you go up the next day or the next week, and it's $12 an hour, and so on. A lot of them are at $14 and $15 an hour now. Well, we had positions that we started out at minimum wage, primarily part-time positions, exclusively, actually. It was all, no full-time positions. It was all part-time positions. And the biggest one was lifeguards. We're getting ready to be into the summer. Last year, we didn't open up our City Park pool. It's our goal to open up the pool this year. It takes 16 lifeguards to operate seven days a week. And currently, we have six. And, boy, you know, we've been doing all kinds of recruiting techniques to try to get people to come.
Come out of retirement.
Yeah, yeah. It'll work. I bet you can still wear the same one. But anyway, we are in dire straits when it comes to lifeguards. We've also got a part-time kennel aid position at the Animal Control Building that has been empty for over a year, and no one has applied for it. We have advertised and advertised and advertised and had no takers. And so I authorized last week, beginning today, or I'm sorry, yesterday, that we raised all those minimum wage jobs to $10 an hour to try to be competitive. And I don't know if that'll do it. You know, people that's paying $14, $15 an hour can't get people. I don't know if we can get people for 10. I don't know. I'm going to try. But one thing we are considering, and I've, you know, again, trying to track what the other industries are doing, is, you know, they're doing signing bonuses. And we thought that we may have to look at doing that with these lifeguards. If Splash Country and the other new water park that they have over there is paying $14 an hour starting out, and that's my understanding, not to mention a ride to work, then we're considering doing a signing bonus at the beginning of the season and then doing a year-end bonus if they stay through the whole season and see it through from beginning to end, get an additional bonus at the end. That's just something we're considering. That's not set in stone yet. But we're having to think outside the box to try to get our pool open. And we definitely need to get this other kennel aid in play down here because we're having to really push the people we have to keep everything under control down there and not let it get out of hand. We're working them as many hours a week as we can without having to make them full-time. You can only, you have to cut them off. You can't, you can go over maybe one week here and there, but you can't do it week in and week out, or you have to switch them over to full-time. And I'm just going to see where that goes. The other thing, well, another thing. We have gotten notice on our CARES Act money, where the federal government's throwing money at everybody. We will be getting approximately $1.8 million over the next two years. Half of it this year, half of it next year. But there are a ton of restrictions on what you can use it on. And we have a lot of need, but unfortunately, 90% of the need is not covered by it. But there are some things that we're going to try to do with the money. We're going to be able to do some, to finish up sewer lines around town that are needed, places that don't have it. We're going to be able to do that. And we've got, and do some other things. Some storm drain issues, they've added that. That wasn't any to begin with, but they have added that. But one thing that is allowed in this and that I think the county school system's already announced their plans, the state has already announced their plans. But one thing that they recommend you do is to do what's called a premium pay bonus for essential employees. And it is, it's not a lot, but it's a little bonus for them because they have to get out and be among the public and do their job day in and day out. And they don't have the option to stay at home. Like a lot of people say, well, I'm scared of COVID. I'm going to stay home. You know, we, as government workers, we can't do that. We have to be here. So we are working on a plan, Tina and I. Tina is doing a good job, trying to stay on top. It's constantly changing under the controller on what the money can be used for. They've expanded it just a little bit more than they did when it first came out a couple of weeks ago. And so I don't know if it'll get expanded any farther or not. I kind of doubt it, but I'm going to try my best to spend it. It'll be about $900,000 this year. We got to 2024 to spend it all. But we'll get half of it this year and half of it next year. And so whatever, whatever we can do with it, we'll do with it. I don't plan on sending any of it back. I just wish there was more we could do with it that we need. The things that we really need, you can't do with it other than the sewer, so. But we'll, we'll do something with it. One piece of good news that we received this week, actually last week. Cinni Moyers is here tonight in the back. We, you know, every year, we kind of hold her breath in anticipation of what our new insurance rates are going to be. And so, you know, everybody that we've kind of been hearing from out and about in other places, we're talking about 25%, 30%, and of course, we just grit our teeth when we would hear that. But I want to commend her. She's done a fantastic job of negotiation for us, and ours is going to come in right around 6%. And that's about unheard of. You know, if you can get it 10% to 12%, you're flying. And like I say, most everybody I've talked to this year, it's been in the 25% to 30% range. So she was able to get us a really good rate, and so I commend her and thank her for that. But finally, we had our litter pickup right after the last meeting, and it was a very successful event. We picked up 111 bags of 33-gallon trash bags that Saturday. We hope to have another one in the next couple of weeks. And the only bad thing about it was within two days, the really bad spots that we hit were right back, looks like you hadn't been there. And that just amazed me. Behind Food City, down next to Ryan's, because I went by and checked, kind of kept an eye on them. And the very next day, Food City, behind Food City, all the way up the railroad track to the Con Aggreg Gate was really bad. We're going to have to, we're going to have to look at some options up there on how to deal with that. We've got some ideas, but we're going to have to crack down on the dumpsters up there if we're going to get that under control. There's just no way around it. So we're going to, we're going to hit it again the next couple of weeks. And, but we did get feedback. People did notice that the town was looking better. I got some, I hope you all might have got some comments. I don't know, but I got a couple of comments from folks about that town was looking good, and they were pleased about it. And Mayor, that's all I got.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
I just wanted to tell all the department heads, I see them all here tonight, of what a good job they're doing. I'm around town to see what's going on with stuff. People brag about our parks and our recreation and the stuff we do. And I just wanted the department heads to know we appreciate it being observed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item six on the agenda is appointment of board, commissions, and committees, which we have none. Item seven is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Tanner Preservation Alliance.
That's under four, Mayor.
And item eight, old business and unfinished business. Item A is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-02, amending the privilege of occupancy in the hotel motel tax.
Excuse me, Mayor. I will read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance 2021-02, an ordinance to amending the city of Newport Municipal Code, Title IX, Business Peddlers Solicitors, et cetera. Chapter Eight, Hotel or Motels. Section 808, Privilege Tax Leaded Use. This would be the second reading.
Need a discussion. Need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion to approve. Motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderwoman Ottinger. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by aye. I'm sorry, we need a roll call.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, just right quick for the record. We heard from this gentleman earlier, Mr. Schuler's attorney. But just for the record, I spoke with a gentleman, and I apologize, I don't remember his name. It was Eric something, who is the manager, as I understand it, of the Best Western for Mr. Schuler. And, oh, is that you? Okay. And he and I spoke about, what, three weeks ago, maybe? And he had questions about the hotel motel tax. I explained to him what our plans were. And again, our plan, the money for the hotel, it's going to be generated, it's about $135,000 to $138,000 that will be generated by this 2% increase. Every dime of that is going to go into the welcome center that we are putting into the Tanner building. And the folks that are going to benefit the most by that welcome center in town is the hotels and the motels. And so that's, you know, the money's not going in, it's going somewhere. We're going to spend it on something. It's going in to operate that welcome center. The bulk of it is for salaries for three people to be working and run it and to operate it. So we're not just trying to raise revenue. We're not, and by our calculation, it's about $1.60 or $0.70 a night on a room. And I just don't see that that's going to be a deterrent to somebody wanting to drive all over creation to find another room to save a dollar and a half. So we feel like that it's a fair thing to pass along, and we're not trying to make money off of it. We're just trying to improve the tourism here, to pull people in. People, when they pull off of the interstates, they look for welcome centers. We're going to, and we're going to open one up here. That's been our plan from day one. When we started renovating the Tanner building was to put a welcome center in there. And it even, it allowed, because that was part of the plan, we were able to get some of the, some grant money to help in the renovation of it because of that. So that is for the record, that's where the money's going. We're not just trying to make a little money off of it and put it in the bank. We're putting every bit that we're making, we're putting in into the welcome center at the Tanner building.
I'm glad you explained that so people understand where it's going to benefit the tax on the hotels, motels, and stuff. So I'm glad you explained that.
Okay. Item nine, under new business, we have, item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2021-03, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Excuse me, Mayor, the caption of that ordinance is ordinance 2021-03, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program for the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2020-2021.
Heard the ordinance. Do we need a motion? To proceed.
I'll make that motion. Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. It's been properly seconded. We need roll call, both please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2021-04, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And Mayor, the lead caption of that ordinance is ordinance 2021-04, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2020-2021 for Newport Grammar School.
Heard the reading. Board pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been properly seconded. We have roll call, vote please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luannie Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
And item C is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2021-05, budget for the city of Newport for fiscal year 2021-22.
And Mayor, the caption of that ordinance is ordinance 2021-05, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022.
You've heard the reading of the ordinance. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been properly seconded. We will need roll call vote.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Item D is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2021 dash 06, amending the zoning map of the city of Newport from R dash 2 residential to C dash 2 commercial located at 644 East Broadway.
If you have any questions about this, this is a piece of property owned by Bill LaBrock. He has an agreement to sell with a gentleman who would like it rezoned, uh, commercial. It's currently residential. On the west side of the property is, uh, owned by Con Aggreg's own manufacturing or, uh, industrial. And then the property to the east side of it is a residence and it is zoned residential. And the sale is, uh, dependent on the, uh, rezoning. And the planning commission passed it with favorably, yeah.
I sit in on that and we can pass it, so that, I make the motion to accept that.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on board, it's been properly seconded. Uh, I don't think we need a roll call.
Yes, that's what we do.
We do? Okay. Uh, roll call vote please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. And item E is consideration of amendment of contract to remove an old fuel tank.
Uh, this is a CDBG project that has, that shut down Main Street and made everybody mad at us for a couple of days. Um, and when, uh, I say that this thing has been cursed, I joke, but now I'm beginning to believe it. Um, when they were digging, after they finally cleared the railroad track and they're digging toward the river, they hit an old fuel tank. I assume at some point the mill had a fueling station for their vehicles on site. Well, that's what we're speculating, I don't know, probably before I was ever born, but, um, they've, uh, the tank's there, it's, there is some condens, we think it's condensation, it didn't smell strongly like gas. We have to have it removed. Now, you would think that would be not as expensive as that sheet tells you it is because you're just lifting it up, but there's a lot of environmental restrictions, there's not really a cheaper way to do it and we can't leave it. So, uh, it'll be an amendment to the contract between us and Blaylock, it will add cost to the project. And I gotta say this upfront because I, if I, if I don't and I come back up here, there's no guarantee that the soil under the tank isn't contaminated, that there may be more remediation that we need. But, um, the city bought that property with no, there was no kind of restriction or agreement, not any, not anybody here. This was done, uh, long before anybody that's in their current position was in their position, but it was bought without any sort of, um, agreement between the seller that if there was something wrong with it, they had to pay for it or anything like that. So, um, there's not really anything we can do besides move forward with the project, get that tank out of there, because if we ever want to use that property for, um, it's, the design's a park, correct? A riverfront park, right Tim? Um, so if we ever want to do that project one day and have that riverfront park, we, we gotta remove the tank.
And there's no way to tell if the soil is contaminated without removing it?
Everyth, the soil around it was not contaminated. However, that doesn't mean what's underneath isn't. Um, if it was, if it smelled str, from, here's what I understand, I'm not an environmental engineer, but the soil, uh, if, that you're highly likely contamination if once you pop it and you could, if it's full of something, there was some liquid in the bottom, but they seem to think that might just be condensation from over the years, or if it's a strong gas smell, which we didn't have that. Now, you could sort of smell gas, but it was a gas tank, so that makes sense, but no way to tell till you rip it up and then test the soil underneath it, unfortunately. I mean, I guess you could dig under, but that seems really complicated and they didn't really offer that as an option.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? All right, you've heard the presentation, what is board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve removing that tank.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion on board to approve, uh, consideration of amendment of contract to remove an old fuel tank. It has been properly seconded, please have roll call, please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you.
If we could, the batch just take care of that and we will.
Well, listen, if it were the 80s, I'm sure there are a lot of things we could still do, but if all of a sudden the tank was gone, TDEC would have an issue with it and there would be people in suits over there, uh, they wouldn't be happy with us.
There's things under, it's out of our control, we have to do, so we might.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, you really don't, cause, cause you could say no, leave it, and then we're gonna have more issues out of us. I mean, this is, it's the only thing to do really and truly, you're kinda pantied by it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Item F, consideration of applicants for a liquor store in city of Newport.
Well, Mayor, at, uh, at the last meeting, uh, it was agreed upon that, um, we would approve for one applicant to apply for a liquor store license with the state of Tennessee. And so, we, we came up with an elimination process of allowing each, uh, individual or group that was interested in doing that to submit a proposal to city hall for, uh, you all to consider. Uh, we had a deadline and we received, uh, four or five, I've lost track now. Uh, by the deadline, we made copies of those and got those to you for you to look at, and tonight, uh, it's time for you to, to make your decision on which one of those four proposals you want to choose to allow to fill out the, uh, the long, complicated application, uh, for certificate of occupancy, the, for whichever one you choose. And there is, for that, there is a $500 non-refundable fee, and it's a, it's a pretty, uh, in-depth process between all the background checks and everything you have to do for that. So, that's whatever your pleasure is now.
For the record, it should be noted that the Mike Ottinger, who has applied, uh, for an application, is not my husband. There's no relation, I said that, just for the record.
Thanks, Mayor. Any comments?
I'm gonna make the motion to accept, uh, Mike Ottinger's application for, uh, to send to the state.
And I'll say it now.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve, uh, Mike Ottinger's application to forward to the state. We need, we need a roll call, need roll call for, vote, please.
Okay. Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Okay, motion, it passes, yes.
Uh, now, we would just advise, uh, them that they just need to come by and pick up the packet that they would have, they need to fill out and fill that out and then bring it in with their $500 fee, and we'll move forward with the process.
Mr. Ottinger in, in the house?
He's here.
Okay.
He understands.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I will move on then to bids, purchases and expenses.
No, we got, we got to a gen, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Number G is a police.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah. We want to do those, James, you, you have those?
Uh, well, the chief, uh, the chief has to make the recommendation on the, uh, if you're gonna do the, uh, the leave of the, the, uh, police officer first, uh, I think the letter is in front of y'all, uh, y'all been provided with a copy of the letter, and, uh, the policy states that upon the recommendation of the chief of police, uh, you all have the authority to approve any, uh, police employee to access the, their, uh, accumulated service credit time to utilize in the event of a catastrophic illness or injury.
Mr. Mayor, council, I, I first want to apologize for not having this on the agenda. Uh, you know, you kinda get used to a well-oiled machine, when the bearing goes out, you don't know what's grinding, but, but we've been, uh, we've been a little behind the eight ball with some COVID problems. I take full responsibility for it not being on the agenda, but I do appreciate y'all amending the agenda and suspending the rule. My employee had surgery and was set to come back and had some recovery problems and has gone beyond their expected leave, and they had submitted me a letter, and it is in your package, I believe, and I submitted a letter as well. We just respectfully request that employee be able to equalize his time and continue to drive. We're hoping he may get to come back real quick, but we just ask that you all approve his going into that third bucket. He'll actually might have to step back a day or two, but we're hoping he, he'll be back quickly.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, uh, his name is Mr. Derek Webb?
Yes.
To, has, his approval to access his early retirement third bucket time. Heard the presentation, do, do we need a roll call for this? Okay, just signify your approval by aye.
Aye.
And any ayes, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Again, I apologize and we do thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, on this other item, Mayor, um, according to the Fire Civil Service Charter, uh, the, in the event that a firefighter, uh, is to be terminated for cause, that item has to be brought before the board by the fire chief, uh, under his recommendation to the board, the board considers whether or not, uh, that, that action needs to be taken. And the, this is the only employees that are done this way, it's because we're still operating under the old civil service charter for the fire department, and, uh, the, under that, the document, the city council hires firefighters and subsequently in the, in the rare event that one needs to be terminated, then that also falls to the council.
Hey, the, a little over a year ago, year and a month, you guys have made me fire chief, and 23 years in the fire department, this is one of the toughest things that, that I've had to do in my career, and, and, uh, I just want to, uh, I want to maintain trust in the fire department, I want you guys' trust and I want the community to trust us. So I'm gonna read what we've got here. After an internal investigation into the theft of property at fire station one, video evidence has been provided that shows fire engineer torn hedge path, removing cash from another employee's private locker. After consideration of all the facts, I'm recommending that engineer hedge path be terminated for cause as provided for in the Fire Civil Service Charter, section, section H. Engineer hedge path has been suspended without pay until this issue is resolved by the appointing authority. The action must be taken within 10 days, and if this recommendation is approved by the board and the mayor of Alderman, the termination may be appealed to the civil service board in writing within 20 days. And this is what my recommendation for you guys to consider.
Okay, we've heard the presentation then, what is the board's pleasure?
Accept this. I make a motion to accept his recommendation, that's one of the hardest things we've had to deal with too, because you really like somebody, but you gotta do what you gotta do, so appreciate your job you're doing.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to, have a, a motion, who, do we have a second? Do you second? Okay, we do need a roll call then.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Okay, that's, that's tough one. Item 10 is bids, purchases and expenses. Item A is consideration of bids for a roof replacement for both Newport fire station one and two.
Yes, Newport Fire Department's requesting, uh, that you guys consider accepting the bid to re-roof both fire stations, uh, as, as put in your packet. The roofs are getting pretty bad, uh, we're having to regularly patch them, and there's been a lot of flex seal been put on, holes and stuff to stop the leaks. Uh, they're about to get past the point of patching, and, uh, we, we've had a bid opening, and the, the lowest bid, we can do both stations for just under $105,000. Uh, we did budget $70,000 for one roof, uh, uh, the fire department would be diverting $20,000 from some internal remodel for that, and, uh, would need a $15,000 increase to help us, and we can go ahead and get, uh, both roofs. Uh, we, we want to do both because it's cheaper to get them done that way with, with the bids, and it's hard to get people to do stuff and, and material, building material and all this stuff just keeps rising. So, uh, we just want you guys to consider that.
I'll make my motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion then on the board to approve, uh, replacement of both, of roofs for both fire station one and two, has been properly seconded, uh, we will need a roll call. Vote, please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Motion carries then. Item B, consideration of bids for fitness flooring for the community center.
Yes, council, uh, on May 4th, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department had a deadline for bids on the fitness flooring for the community center, and there was only one bid that came in, and that was AJ Sports. And this flooring is a, uh, a material that is, uh, interlocking and recyclable lead, uh, rubber, plus it is a, uh, a safety concern for our, our wellness room in the community center. So, that's the only bid that we got.
How much it was?
Twenty-three.
Twenty, twenty-three seventy-eight? Okay.
Is this replacing a current floor?
I have some pictures of it so that, uh, in case we might need those. Uh, it, this is actually a part of the renovation that goes into the front side to the glass den area, that ties into the, uh, the old chamber and the storage room that's out front where the glass is, that used to be open pavilion, because that's where we're moving our wellness room into, and that's the flooring that goes in that area.
I think it's just concrete now, isn't it?
It is concrete, there is some, there, there's some old tile rubber that Bobby Juntry put in there in the 70s, but, uh, it, it just has to be removed, it's, it's not usable. So that's, that's a part of the renovations that's in play.
Twenty-three thousand, zero, oh, seven, eight, thirty?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, purchase of the flooring.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the consideration of bid, uh, fitness flooring for the community center in the amount of $23,078 and 30 cents. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks for asking that question because that, I let, did leave that out as far as the, the renovation, which is also the next one coming up also.
Okay, good. That item is, item C is consideration of bids for heating and air units and ductwork for the operation and wellness areas at the community center.
Yes, uh, and, and we did follow the same suit. On May 4th, we put out, uh, our deadline for our bids, and there was, uh, the low bid was Thornton Heating and Air. And that is, uh, two five-ton units, one for the wellness area and one for the operations area. So there's two units that would be installed, and, you know, no offense to Newport Utilities, but we're also looking at the possibility of, uh, using natural gas as, uh, heat for this facility. So we're trying to weigh the option still yet, are we doing heat or doing, we electric? It all depends on what the situation is with the gas company to get us a new meter put in for that area, on that side of the building.
Does that require additional ductwork or is?
With, uh, it, gas lines. Uh, it would take a meter to put on the other side of the building.
Okay.
So, we don't know if we'll use gas.
Okay.
So you don't currently use gas?
We do use gas on the dehumidification and the pool heaters, uh, but, uh, the building itself is based upon a TVA package, it's called, uh, concrete ceiling tile, uh, panels that heat up, that heat the room, and it's, uh, it's one of those Johnson control issues that we've had that has helped heat the building over the years, but also, uh, there's a, the, it, it, it works for that building, but that's 27 years of me operating it, so that's why it works.
Gotcha.
The, that line, that are already running.
Well, they, they would have to, they would have to bring it into the, let's see, that would be the north side of the building to the gymnasium side. We have gas to the gymnasium now with, with pool heat, modine heaters in the basketball gyms. But they're afraid the meter that's there will not furnish enough natural gas going through the existing pipes throughout the building, that it would have to come in on the gym side, put a new meter and run piping. And it would be a separate system to meet the amount of gas that's projected to do those five-ton heaters. So we're trying to figure out if we can do that. And of course, the gas company's working with Jeff. I think Jeff's here and, and they, I think they have give him a proposal on what it's going to cost to do that. But still, these are the five-ton heaters. We just don't know if we're going to use gas or electric yet.
You have four different bids here and by my calculation, which might be suspect, comes up to about $90,000?
He's asking for either or on the air units.
Right.
Either or.
Oh, yeah. One is seventeen fives, one eighteen five.
Each. And then there's two of those. So the gas units that he's requesting is the $37,000 versus electric at $35,000. If we said, he thinks the gas will be more energy efficient.
Right.
So if we agree, or the council, not we, but the council agreed to a bid up to $37,000, that way we can have that in there, assuming that we get the gas lines.
So these are the grand totals, the 35 and the 37?
Yes, for the units.
Okay, I've got it now.
No, it's confused.
Well, she dug me out of a hole there, is what she's done. She dug me out of the hole.
I'm still confused. One is, the $37,000, okay, I get that. But is the duct work separate?
The duct work is separate. That's an additional charge. The paintable is the 9,500, the non-paintable is 8,500.
Okay.
So for just a little bit more, you get that paintable and he can blend it in with the rest of the decoration and the walls and stuff. And I think that'll make it look neater.
To make it look more commercial, industrial look in there for the wellness room. They don't spend tons of money on it.
Right. So grand total, if he got the paintable plus the two gas units, you're looking at $46,500. That's the maximum. And then if he is able to get the gas meter, he gets this. If not, it would have to be the electric, which means it'd be $2,000 less. So you're covered at 46,500.
Thank you, Tina.
Bless you, dear. Hey, man, I'm telling you, she's got the numbers down. She keeps us in straight.
Thank you, Tina.
Tim, is this the only bid you received?
There was four bids in there, wasn't there?
This is the only vendor.
Only vendor. All right, you've heard his presentation then. We need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the maximum of 46,500?
46,500.
For additional duct work and heating and air conditions for community center. It hasn't been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tina.
And thank you, Tina. And counsel, I would like to invite you to the city park. We're, we're wide open on baseball right now. We've got all four fields going tonight with T-ball, coach pitch, nine and tens and the intermediate programs. So if you get a chance, Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays, we're playing baseball right now as long as it's not raining. And tonight, the place is covered over. So if you get a chance, then yes, we are opening your city park pool this year.
Good comments, Abner.
If we can get lifeguard.
We've got four. We'll make it work.
Steve will come out of retirement.
Okay. It's now time for our item 11 and comments from citizens. And I think Ms. Jim Leiser is here for Empower Cut County.
Good evening. I'm Jim Leiser. I work for Empower Cut County as a program coordinator there. And one of the major programs that I've run is a volunteer-based senior citizen transportation program. We've had it going since February 2020. It's slowly built in momentum, or I really should say it's fastly built in momentum. We have about 30 clients and we, we sometimes have to put a waiting list on them due to lack of drivers. We, we serve any of the areas. So we do city, county, but we take them anywhere they need to go, whether it's veterans to Johnson City VA, you know, Sevierville, Knoxville. If we got a driver willing, we get them there. What I have tonight is more of, you know, request. What we found when we looked at numbers is about 72% of our clients are city residents. And I know there's always been a lack of transportation here other than ethra. It's, it's a huge problem. But it's something we're trying to combat, at least right now with our senior citizen population. And so I had presented a few weeks ago to some of the staff here at Merdyx, if the city would be willing to do possibly a one-time donation to our nonprofit to help keep this program sustainable, you know, just in the county, in the city, because it's, it's a huge need. I mean, we are bringing a lot of quality and dignity to the lives for our elderly here. And we also do weekly care checks on them, phone calls, just volunteer-based in that, that regard. So it's definitely needed. It's definitely wanted. Our seniors are, are just loving it. And it's a one-on-one type of transportation program. So our drivers stay with them. They shop with them. They do whatever is needed and they, a lot of them go above and beyond. So if that is something that I could request, I don't actually have an amount that I'm asking for. So I would probably let, let that up to the council.
That needs to be made in the form of a request, a formal request by letter for some, for, for that to be made, to make a formal request?
Formal request, yes.
Yeah, to, to do anything like that. That's not to say I can approve it or anything, but we'll.
But do by letter?
We can consider it.
Okay, okay.
It is something, we've had the first reading of the budget and the first reading of the budget amendment. There's no budget line items for that in there right now. So that's something we would have to add to it at the next time, if it is done within this next month. If not, then it would be same thing for next budget year. It'd need to be something submitted, approved, and then I'd need to do a budget amendment for that.
Okay.
And do you need our, like our yearly budget or, you know, fiscal numbers, that kind of thing?
Doesn't hurt. Have all that information would certainly help.
Okay, I'll get that to you. Thank you.
If anyone else wishes to be heard, citizens' comments. If not, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
We are adjourned.